This conference will now be recorded.
All right, this is Jay Hibansky, Planning and Zoning Administrator for the town of Stratford, here opening up our zoning board of appeals administrative session on April 20th, 2020. Just a few reminders before we get started, just everyone announce who you are before you start speaking, and if you've got a question, raise your hand, and then the chairman will call on folks as he feels ready, and with that, I will turn it over to Chairman Petroselli.
All right, you want me to read the script?
You're more than welcome to.
All right, well, I got myself on the camera now, how do I get everybody else? Do you see me? Jay, you there?
Yes, Jay Hibansky here.
Okay, I got myself on the camera, but I don't have everybody else on.
Um, there's gotta be an option for you somewhere.
That's what I'm looking for.
To turn your camera on, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. Last time, it just came up automatically, but it was a different computer, too, it was my desktop. All right, let's start. This is how we're gonna start on the 5th. Good evening, this is Len Petroselli, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Due to the coronavirus 19 pandemic, we are conducting this meeting on go-to meetings on Tuesday, May 5th, 2020. Actually, today's April 20th for the recording. I will now call on the following elected members to speak up as present. Gavin Forrester. Annette Streets. Mary Young.
Present. If I may, while I'm still talking.
What's that?
Uh, Jay, I think as the host, perhaps you can rename me. Instead of Georgie, I'm my husband, are you able to rename me as Mary Young? You can do that using other technology like Zoom.
I can't, when you're, when you're under someone else's account, I cannot rename you. I tried.
Yeah, thank you. I hope to be on my desktop when we do this, my laptop rather, next time, I was racing from work to be on time, so hopefully you'll see me as Mary Young next time, so I'm sorry, you were in the middle of roll call when I interrupted, thank you.
Lorenzo Elder. Okay, Alton, this is David Cilio here. Ron Ticky. Judy Clary. All right, I'm gonna also welcome Jay Hibansky, who we've heard from, Planning and Zoning Administrator, Alex Florrick, Town Attorney, are you present, Alex?
I'm here.
Okay, and Gail DeCilio, Recording Secretary.
I'm here.
Okay. All right, I'm just gonna go through this quickly, before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to remind everyone to raise their hand if they would like to be recognized by the chair, and wait to be recognized, you can't do that now because I can't see you, and call down each and every time throughout this meeting. Please identify yourself by name and title each time you would like to speak. This is per Governor Lamont's executive order, which allows us to conduct virtual meetings. The public is free to listen but may not speak, only at the invitation of the chair. With that said, I will call this monthly session of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order at 7:11 PM. All right, Jay.
All right, um, the only thing that we have, um, in terms of business for this evening, other than get logged on, which, you know, we're mostly there, and this is Jay Hibansky again, I'm sorry, um, we have two items for approval if we want, we've got two, two minutes of February 4th, 2020, uh, which was our last public hearing, and then we have the April 7th, uh, 2020 meeting, uh, that we just recently had, our test meeting, um, if folks would rather wait till next month, they can vote on them then, otherwise you can vote on them tonight.
I don't know, I'll just say in a motion to do the February meeting minutes.
I second.
Okay, who made the motion?
I'll make the motion, Mary.
Okay, Mary made the motion, seconded by?
Lorenzo Elder.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye, Mary Young.
Opposed? Opposed? Chair votes, yes, carried unanimously. All right, the April, what was it?
Forgive me?
April 7th.
April 7th. Entertain a motion on the April 7th minutes.
Chairman, uh, Mary Young is raising her hand for a question.
Go ahead, Mary.
Excuse me, uh, Mr. Chair, I think we are viewing this as a practice meeting for which I for one am grateful. I'm calling in on my cell phone, get on, on the meeting visually, so I'm almost there, halfway there, but we just took a roll call, which doesn't work so well remotely, I think you need to go down the line and ask each individual by name, yes, Ms. Young, no, Ms. Young, rather than all of us speaking collectively. In my point of view, I'll let Jay Hibansky weigh in about necessities of doing roll call votes, even on something as simple as minutes. Jay?
Sure, this is Jay Hibansky, uh, yeah, Mary, I, I don't think that's a bad idea at all, I think that way it's crystal clear who's saying what.
All right, why don't we make, why don't we table the April meetings then, the April minutes?
Well, if I may, again, Mary Young speaking, I think we're just figuring out how to move forward, and the minutes are as good as anything to learn of this, so I for one am prepared to make a motion, if the chair is willing, for approving the April minutes, and if others are agreeable, then we can just take a roll call vote, so we can get that accomplished as well.
All right, Jay, do we have five people present?
We do, we have, um, we're gonna, this is Jay Hibansky, Chairman, I would ask that you select, uh, have Ron Ticky sit in for Commissioner Streets, um, and then we will have a full, full voting, um, we'll have a full vote, vote, voting commission.
Okay, so Mr. Ticky, you'll be sitting in for Annette Streets. All right, Mary Young has made a-
Make sure you unmute yourself, when, Ron and Gavin, make sure you unmute yourselves when you, when you speak.
All right, Mary Young made a motion to accept the minutes, Mary, was that April or February?
Uh, well, I thought we had approved February, so now I'm onto April.
All right, motion by Mary, into the second. Do you have, all right, that's Lorenzo?
Yes.
Okay, Lorenzo makes a second, any discussion? All right, hearing none, Gavin Forrester?
Yes.
Mary Young?
Jay.
Lorenzo?
Yes.
Mr. Ticky?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes, motion carried. All right, Jay, back to you.
Okay, well, um, unless the, the board has, this is Jay Hibansky again, unless the board has any other, um, business that they'd like to discuss tonight, that's on the work agenda, our next public meeting is gonna be May 5th, 2020, uh, 7 PM, uh, we'll be having the same go-to meeting format, uh, we've got a full agenda, um, we've got eight applications, and I would, I would let the, the commission know that, um, I've already spoken with all the applicants, they know that we're gonna try our best, um, but there's no guarantee that we're gonna get through the entire agenda, we're gonna do our best, but, um, they're also aware of the full agenda, and they're gonna do their best to be concise as well, so, um, you know, five minutes for these less complicated applications, and then let the questions go to the commissioners, and let the commissioners determine how long they really want each application to go, so, um, unless you all have any other information for me to relay to our, our folks, uh, everyone is looking ready to go, and we'll have the applications, all the digital applications up for your review and public review, um, seven days prior to the meeting.
And what are those, seven applications?
There are eight, this is Jay Hibansky, there are eight applications.
And what do they look like, Jay, from your viewpoint, I mean, are there any involved, or some just relatively, nothing simple, but some relatively easier than others?
Yeah, this is Jay Hibansky, I think, this is Jay Hibansky, um, I think that if we were all in our comfortable setting and in council chambers, we would be out of there in, in, you know, an hour and a half, two hours tops. I, there's a lot, but they're pretty straightforward.
Okay, you had asked the town attorney, uh, Alex, Mr. Attorney Florrick, of an opinion at the last meeting, was, am I correct?
Uh, I'm not sure I did, but, uh, uh-
Someone did, I thought it was you, but someone did ask him.
Uh, Commissioner Petroselli, I know that Mary Young raised her hand, I just wanted to make sure you're aware.
Okay, Mary, go ahead.
Uh, well, I can hold my thought till we hear from Alex, so thank you.
Okay, Alex?
What was the requested opinion again? I'm sorry.
Mary Young?
Do you think it was me who asked the question? You would think I might remember.
I thought it was Jay, actually.
Yeah, this is Jay Hibansky, um, I, I vaguely remember, I, I have some notes here that Commissioner Young was, had asked Attorney Florrick about public participation, I believe, and, you know, we discussed how the town had, and the other boards are trying to do it, is that we're leaving the public participation open up until 24 hours prior to the meeting, and at that point, we will close them, and then if the board feels that they want to leave it open for another month, another few weeks, to get more public commentary after the meeting, that we could do that, but we won't be taking, uh, we don't plan on taking in real-time commentary at the moment. I, I think that's what it was about.
So I guess that the question is, Attorney Florrick, if we're not taking real-time comments from people for and against, is that, is that allowable?
I mean, I, I know that, uh, now that you refreshed my recollection, that, uh, a couple of attorneys were kicking around that idea, um, and so I think the jury's still out on it, it might, it might, it might raise an issue, uh, about limiting the public's ability to participate in these meetings, but, uh, we'll, we'll get that straightened out certainly by the May 5th meeting.
And this is Jay Hiban, oh, I'm sorry, uh-
There was an issue raised, though, I think Mary Young raised an issue about somewhere they allowed the comments during the meeting, and it turned into a nightmare? If you recall that, Jay, I think, go ahead, Mary.
So, uh, thank you for refreshing us, Jay, that it was me who asked the question, and I don't know that we left it for Alex to answer, but rather we were all just collectively sharing, how do we want to approach our first meeting, and what are others doing, are there lessons learned, mistakes not to repeat, or things to find out, and I now know more on that topic than I did when last we were assembled. Uh, in the case of Westport, which doesn't mean we have to fall in Stratford, uh, we have some challenging applications on our upcoming agenda, and various attorneys who are acting on behalf of opposition parties have challenged us that not only do they not believe that taking emails live during the meetings is enough, they are requiring that they have the same status as an applicant, meaning that we can see them, and they can showcase presentation materials by screen sharing and so forth. I think that may be true for a highly contentious application, that we wanna do our best to not curb enthusiasm and prematurely close public hearings, and I imagine our P&amp;Z director and chairman can figure out on offline if we have any of those types of applications that would be subject to a challenging procedure, but I would just offer that if the P&amp;Z director, and excuse me, and chairman feel that there is at least one that qualifies, then I would strongly recommend that we do as we decided last time, and just not close that hearing, but leave it open to the next meeting to allow for public comments to be received on the record prior to the record closing. Jay?
Yeah, this is Jay Hibansky here, um, yeah, Commissioner Young, I, I completely agree, and I think that how, uh, you know, some of the other boards are deciding to handle it is just a case-by-case basis, and I, I know that I talked with Chairman Petroselli, and he kinda felt that, uh, we could, we could do the same with some communication, and I think you all know, you all have done this long enough, and you've seen enough of these meetings to know where, you know, you get two or three folks who will, you get some early opposition or early commentary, and you know that, okay, uh, these ones might be worth holding off for another week or two, or you decide just based on the commentary that you get, that you may wanna deny it, or maybe you feel the commentary is wrong and you approve it, and, you know, it's gonna have to be a judgment call, I think, on your end, and, uh, I think with communication from myself to you all, as well as the chair, um, I would be more than willing to make everyone aware that, you know, if I think we should keep it open for an additional two weeks, and schedule a special meeting to give the public another two weeks to send testimony once they've heard the live presentation, then I think that we can do that on a case-by-case basis, um, and I will turn that over to you all for discussion.
Yeah, I would prefer that than have somebody, to give the two weeks, rather than have somebody say we didn't give an ample opportunity to be heard. I tried to avoid that, oh, go ahead, Jay.
And this is Jay Hibansky again, the, and part of the, one of the advantages of having meetings like this, where everyone's at home, is that we're not all competing to get council chambers, so as long as we file the minutes, I'm sorry, the agendas, uh, with 24 hours in advance, and in compliance with all the executive orders, uh, we can easily schedule these meetings two, three, four days after, um, or two weeks after, so, they're much easier to set up these, these special meetings, so that's something to keep in mind.
This is Len Petroselli, Jay, you see anything really controversial outside of Victoria Lawn?
Uh, this is Jay Hibansky, no, I wouldn't say, I would, I would not say we have anything controversial, um, I wouldn't even call the, the Margarita Long one necessarily controversial, but I think that there's just gonna be people who, I've already received some letters about it.
So, all right, I think we all have.
And so be, be sure that you send those letters to me, um, email them to me, that way I can make sure I get them in the record, um, so if anybody gets anything from the public, be sure to send it to me.
All right, yeah, one of them you were copying on, I don't think you were on the other one.
But other than that, this is Jay Hibansky again, other than that, I don't think, um, you know, there, it's a pretty straightforward ZBA meeting, lots of res, lots of our general residents coming in for decks and, you know, additions, you know, the, the run-of-the-mill stuff.
They resent them by themselves, I take it. Go ahead, Mary.
Um, I'll just pick on Lorenzo, because he's newest to the board, hello again, Lorenzo, how are you? I just want Lorenzo and the rest of us to be reminded that as tempting as it may be, should our phones ring, or should we receive letters from residents who want feedback on a pending application, you, you gotta shut them down and say, uh, nothing personal, but I cannot participate outside the public hearing forum and engage with you on this topic, I encourage you to write to our P&amp;Z director, here's his email address, and try to run away from it if you possibly can, unless they've got you stopped in the supermarket.
Lorenzo, yeah, Jay.
This is Jay Hibansky.
Go ahead, Jay.
Lorenzo, and Lorenzo, if you ever have anyone reaching out to you as well, you can always just direct them to me, I'm the one, you can consider me as the one who gathers all the information from the public, and then disperses it to all the commission, commission members, so that everyone's getting the same information. And go ahead, Lorenzo, I know you had your hand raised.
Uh, this is Lorenzo Elder, I did receive a letter today, uh, from Susan Cox.
Collier.
Yes, and, uh, it was about the parks, I believe. I briefly read it, I left it outside, but is that the letter you would like me to email to you, Jay?
Sure, even if you're not, this is Jay Hibansky, even if you're not sure, you can just always pass it along to me, and as, as Commissioner Young, uh, mentioned, it's, uh, you know, you get stopped in the grocery store, and I get stopped all the time on stuff, and it's, you know, it's, you know, you understand, you politely tell folks that that's why we have the meetings open to the public, so that the public, um, can give us their input and send us letters, and, and that's the right format for that, for everyone to listen at the same time.
All right, this is Len Petros, I got one from Daniel Cox, and I believe I'm the only one that got this, I don't see anybody else copied on it, so I'm gonna scan it, I'll send it to you, Jay, and then maybe you can send it out to everybody, because this one, Sue, the other one, everybody was copied on, this one, I believe only came to me, because I don't see it copied to anybody. Anybody get anything from Daniel Cox, 134 Victoria Lawn?
No, Mary Young speaking.
No, you think, all right, so I'm gonna send it to you, Jay, and then you can get it out to everybody?
Perfect, that's what we'll do.
Okay, I'll also send you the other one, too, just in case, I've only gotten two. Anybody else get any more than the, I, everybody got the one from Sukalier, I know that, anybody else get in the other, from anyone else? All right, if not, anything you get, I would just scan it and send it to Jay, even if, even if we've seen it, this way there won't be any, uh, misses where people don't see people's letters or their objections.
Right, this is Jay Hibansky, and two quick things, if, even if you don't have a scanner, you can take a picture of it with your cellphone as well, and just, and, uh, either email to me or text it to me, um, and then Chairman, Commissioner Elder had his hand raised.
Go ahead, Lorenzo, go ahead.
This is Lorenzo Elder, um, the last meeting we had with the test, um, I heard people or someone talking about a four-hour meeting, and lately I've been, uh, doing the Zoom stuff, and I'm new at this, as you all know, I'm, I'm gonna stop saying that, but, I, you know, four hours sitting in this little house in front of this laptop screen, might be a little much for me, um, so, but then I hear you saying tonight that, you know, it should take no more than two hours.
Well, this is Jay Hibansky, I'm not sure that it's gonna be under two hours, um, I think that, I'm not, I'm not preparing for a four-hour meeting, I'll say that.
No, I don't, listen, I do an hour and a half, every- Right, I do an hour and a half every day with Sikorski's, this type of a meeting, I gotta tell you, I'm ready to kill after an hour and a half. So it is a long, anything over two hours, I think is gonna be a bit much, you know, it's one thing if we're sitting there, and I know it sounds silly, but if we're sitting there, we interact, we see each other, then two or three hours will go by, but I agree with Lorenzo, sitting in, in a room, it's a long time to be on the phone, and I've already been on for an hour and a half that day before we start, so.
And you're getting lots of thumbs up, Chairman, Chairman, you're getting lots of thumbs up on the screens here.
I mean, I don't, I don't know if we should cut it back, if we, you know, we can, once we're there, we're there, we can't tell people at nine o'clock, go home.
Actually, I, Mary Young speaking, I think you can, but politically, perhaps, that's not.
What do you think, Jay, you think we should split into two meetings, or?
Yeah, this is Jay, I would see how it goes, you know, I mean, the, the reason why I don't think that we're gonna be here for three hours on, on the 5th, is-
I mean, I can reset the meeting whenever I want, but that's beside the point.
Yep, you can, and I think that you're just gonna have to gauge the group, maybe when we're, you know, three, four applications in, you check the temperature of the commission and see how folks are doing, and, uh-
They'll all be on the screen, so alls I gotta do is like, give me the, give me the faces, you know, then I'll know.
Yeah, and, and this is Jay again, and I think because there are a lot of homeowners, those presentations tend to be much more brief.
Right, right. How many attorneys do we have? Because they can talk.
Uh, two. We have Attorney representing Margarita Long.
Oh, God, okay.
And then we have Attorney, Attorney Lord representing the Stagg Street application.
Okay, and the one on the, uh, is it King Street, is just gonna be the homeowner?
Uh, I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right, anybody else's stock process on, you have a problem on the 5th, if it starts getting near nine o'clock and there's four or five more that goes, if I reset the meeting? I'll take that as a yes, that you agree.
You're getting a thumbs up.
All right, does anybody else have any other questions before we get into our May 5th meeting?
Yes.
Lorenzo Elder?
Yeah, Jay, actually, why don't you just recognize him, because you can see him, and I don't have a problem with that.
Great, Lorenzo, go ahead.
Um, just a quick, quick question, um, I'm not gonna say I'm new at this, but Jay, how long before I can get the, uh, a package of the agenda, what we're dealing with? Because I might need to talk to other members just to be brought up to speed on terminology and exactly what's going on.
Sure, this is Jay Hibansky, Lorenzo, that's a good question, and that's the one thing I was gonna add tonight, is, um, we have, we're waiting on one more application to send us their digital file, and then everything will be posted on the computer, on the Planning and Zoning webpage, and I'm gonna send out an email with the links and, uh, directions how to navigate the page, how you'll review all your applications, where the agendas are, where the recordings of, of these meetings will be housed, and basically how you'll navigate your digital packets, so Lorenzo, I don't, were you getting the hard copy packets? I know you're relatively new, did you receive any of the hard copy packets that I've sent?
Um, I did get something from, I'm just thinking, I did get something, um-
Well, we used to send them out, hard copies, and this is just gonna be basically a digital version of that packet.
Well, you got the hard copies for the February meeting.
Yes, I did.
Right.
The blueprints, the-
So this'll, and this is Jay Hibansky, this'll essentially be the same thing, just a digital, it's just a website that houses it all, with the agendas, the minutes, the recordings, and all the applications and plans, as well as any of the, um, any of the feedback that I'm getting, the public commentary, those are being posted there as well. Commissioner Young?
Mary Young here, if I can react to something I heard Lorenzo say, and perhaps Attorney Florrick can weigh in, I heard Lorenzo talk about he might want to reach out to a fellow member prior to the meeting to discuss, uh, logistics and/or terminology, or things of that nature, and Alex, I'm gonna make a statement, you can tell me if I'm right, wrong, or something in between, I believe that any member of a political party can caucus with their fellow political party members, but beyond that, we are confined to, you know, discussing these things in the public forum, in the same way we told our neighbors, please don't talk to us outside the public hearing forum, Alex?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Jay Hibansky, and I'll just add that, Lorenzo, I would always recommend, if you have questions, or terminology, any, any technical questions, you can always contact me, you can always call or email me, we'll set up a call, and I'd be happy to walk through applications with you, um, and I think that's always a little bit better to have the dialogue with the staff, and keep the commissioner dialogue for the public, uh, public, um, portion of our meetings, and I'll turn this over to Attorney Florrick.
Well, Jay just said what I was gonna say, uh, Mr. Elder, my recommendation would be that if you have questions about terminology or stuff like that, just shoot Jay an email or give him a call, and he'll, he'll walk you through stuff, um, Commissioner Young is right that there, there, for other commissions, like the town council, there is an exception for members of the same political party to caucus together, but with the land use board, I would, I would caution you guys not to, uh, discuss applications and stuff outside of the public hearing.
Okay.
Commissioner Young, did you have your hand raised?
Well, I, I'm feeling, uh, discriminated against as a member of the land use board, I thought I had the same caucusing abilities, if Lorenzo and I had spare time and wanted to discuss, I thought we were enabled to, because we're on the same Democratic Party, but if Alex is telling us not so, then I will refrain from doing so, and your advice that you'll be open to receiving questions, Jay, um, I for one am grateful, and I often have questions of you, and you're always generous, thank you.
All right, Jay. As long as Lorenzo only meets with one person, it's fine, if he meets with two, then that's three, that's a quorum, and it's an illegal meeting, so it's really- that's a quorum, and it's an illegal meeting. So, he really can't meet with more than one person. So, if he wants to sit down with me, or Mary, or whatever, that's fine, but if he sits down with me and Mary, it's an illegal meeting. Who is that?
Commissioner Young. Commissioner Young had her hand raised.
So, again, since we have time to talk about these things, uh, that's a variation to what we were just discussing. I heard Alex originally say, "Don't do it. Now, call Jay if you have questions." Now, I'm hearing if we're not creating a quorum, but just a one-on-one, then it's okay. And again, I thought it would only be okay if you were of the same political party, but Alex, am I learning, as I often do on the go, that a one-on-one, no matter what party each person is a match, party choose, is permissible, Alex?
I, uh, I, again, I, I would, I would advise against, uh, you guys discussing applications outside of the public meetings, just because everything you say, everything you discuss becomes part of the record of the, of, of the application, and if there's an appeal, tho, those comments have to be part of the record for the court. Um, and also, all these applicants, uh, opponents to certain applications have a right to know, you know, what's being discussed publicly. So, if you guys, you know, I, I see what you're saying, uh, that if it's only two of you, that it's not technically a quorum, but I would still, I would still caution against it, and if you have questions, send to Jay, and, and any discussion you guys have on an application should happen in a public meeting such as this, a, a virtual public meeting. That, that would be my advice, but, uh, it's kind of a unique question, Mary. I, I have not heard that one before, so, but that's just my advice on the fly, is keep it in the meeting.
Yeah, but you're, you're cautioning against it. You're, you're not, you're saying, you're not saying that if somebody chooses to talk to another commissioner, that they can't do it.
Well, tho, those sorts of things, we call them ex parte communications in land use law, and, and, you know, for instance, if, uh, if a commissioner went to a, 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 a civic group, had a hearing on a, on a, on a land use application, but that wasn't part of the actual zoning hearing, that's what we call those ex parte communications, and they happen outside of the public hearing, and sometimes they, they lead to, to litigation and stuff like that, which is, which is why I'm advising against it, for you guys having discussions outside of the public meeting.
Yeah, Lorenzo, go ahead, go ahead, Lorenzo.
Um, but again, just because I'm new at this, I would just go to Jay right now, just so, you know, like, there is no, uh, fallback on any of us, especially me being in the position I'm in. I have to be very careful about what I'm doing here, so, I think I'll take the advice of the attorney right now.
Uh, Commissioner Young, you have your hand raised?
Only a, a visual question. I'm seeing two Lorenzos on my screen. Is there a reason for that? I've got Lorenzo straight on, and Lorenzo sidly.
Yeah, this is Lorenzo. I have you on my laptop, and I also have my phone for audio.
Wow. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to, uh, say before our meeting?
Lost our penny, this is Lorenzo.
Go ahead, Lorenzo.
No, I'm, I'm fine. I was making a joke.
All right, yeah, and, and this is, this is Jay, uh, uh, Jay Hibansky. Again, I'll, I'm going to send out all the details. Once I get everything up on the website, I'll notify everybody so that they can start reviewing, um, before our next meeting. I'd love for everyone to try to get logged on at least five minutes ahead of time, so I can label everybody. We get all squared away, so that we're ready to roll at seven. And, um, if, uh, I, I, if any, any of our alternates, Ron, we appreciate you being here. As, this is a perfect example of why I'm going to ask all alternates to be mandatory to attend, in case someone has a, uh, a, a technical difficulty, we've got someone there to step up and, uh, keep things moving along.
Now, what are we going to see when the petitioner's standing up there presenting his petition?
Can you say that again?
Yeah, what are we going to see when they're presenting their petition? What they're going to be reading to us? We're going to have a copy of, or-
So, this is Jay Hibansky, so you will have to be following along. It, it depend, so it depends. I think most people are just going to call in on a phone and say, "Hi, my name is Jay Hibansky. I want to build a front deck, and it's going to be three feet from the property line," and you all will be following along on the, you can either print out the stuff that I post online, or you can just go to the website and navigate each application as someone's talking about them. However, you all are most-
Go ahead.
However, you all are most comfortable doing that. So, I think most people are just going to call in and narrate their project. I think they're going to get maybe some of the attorneys who may, I will give them presenter status, and then they can share their screen, and then run a PowerPoint presentation for us to look at.
Yeah, that's my concern, because a lot of times when they're there, they will pass something out to the commissioners that we haven't seen prior to.
If they do that, then they're going to have to wait another, to the next meeting, in order for us to get it up online, and everyone be able to review it, and I will, Commissioner Young, it sounds like, do you have something you had to, you want to add, Commissioner Young?
I was just keeping my thumbs up, and I like what I'm hearing.
Yeah, so, and I've made, this is Jay again, I've made it clear to all applicants that if we don't get your information before, seven days before the meeting, and you have new stuff, that you're most likely going to be waiting unless there's extended waiting.
Yeah, well, no, 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 not most likely. It's not going to be voted on that night till we see what they have.
Perfect, and Chairman, I, I would always leave that to your discretion. I didn't want to make the call for you, so, but I agree with that.
Yeah, no, if they bring something that we have not seen, then they're going to have to wait.
I agree. Uh, Commissioner Young has her hand raised.
Go ahead.
Mary Young speaking. So, you remember my seeing two Lorenzos, and thank you for the explanation. I'm seeing a visual for Rich for Death, but not hearing or seeing him. Is he in fact present?
Yes, I am.
Hey, hello. Thank you, that was it.
He's preparing for his meeting.
Yeah, Commissioner Fredak can't get enough. He's got to go to, come to the ZBA meeting.
He wants to make sure that he's organized for his meeting next month, next week, right?
Uh, we, we've got a zoning, this is Jay, we have a zoning meeting on Wednesday. We've got a public hearing.
Really?
Yep. So, no one call in and cause trouble.
I was just thinking, myself, it might not be a bad idea for me to sit there and watch and see what happens. Get some live action. What's that, Rich?
That's what I'm doing.
Yeah, that, that might be a thought. All right, uh, anybody else have anything else? If I don't hear anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mary Young, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mary Young. Do I hear a second?
Uh, Lorenzo, uh, raised his hand. Lorenzo, can we hear you say?
Lorenzo Elder, second.
All right, oh, okay, I'll do a roll call, Mary Young.
Agreed, yay.
At Gavin Horstner? Ron Ticky? Do we hear Ron?
Hi.
Hello. Okay, Lorenzo?
Yes.
Okay, Chair Rocheth, and the motion is, meeting is adjourned at 7:46.
Thank you, Mr. Young, thank you, Jay.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for doing this again, and we get to do it on May 5th for real. Any questions, like Jay said? Uh, Jay, any questions, you can direct them to Jay. How do you want me to email you?
Yeah, anyone can email, everyone can email me, uh-
With any questions they might have?
Any questions, anything you get from the public, just send along to me, and if you want to talk, we, I will just schedule a time to, to chat over the phone.
Okay, and when do you say we're going to get the, uh, copies of the petitions?
Uh, a minimum of seven days prior to the public hearing. I'm hoping I'm going to have the public hearing ahead of time, but I'm, uh, being conservative at the moment.
All right. All right, well, thank you. Thank everyone for joining in. Uh, stay safe. Enjoy the rest of your week, and we'll see you on May 5th.
Great, have a good night, everybody.
Have a good night. Be safe.
Bye-bye.
Bye.